Motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Approval of Monday, September twenty-sixth minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
There's been a motion in a second, any more discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alright, first item on the agenda is to approve the flat. Everybody have time to take a look over this?
Hearing no objections to the plan, make a motion to approve it.
I'll second motion.
There's been a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Close motion carries. Alright, second item is to approve payables. Zach is not so small this time.
Yeah, you can.
I can make this an agenda item next week if you guys are okay with that. We will a week be enough time for you guys to do what you need to do.
You know, actually.
One idea of her call.
Okay.
She sent an email out that, you know, there was.
Well, yeah, she said it was gonna be less and then we got it and it's not.
But she says, and also there she says there's a lot of stuff. Follow up in the second, first year after a new certification. And I don't know, I want to have that explained to me more.
Well, maybe when, you know, you go from having a union agreement that you follow. For policies and procedures to go even a hand book. I suppose that would be part of it.
Once we have before, we had to have basically some. Interoffice policy that knows to cover some of the things that were in the order, but a lot of that stuff has been taken off before. There's not a lot in there that in the in the union that has to be addressed, but there there is some.
Just did we, we changed and the handbook addresses your guys' location and it also addresses the uniforms. That the allowance, I'm pretty sure that's.
Yep, yep, there's, there's not a lot, there's not a lot, and there's already, I think it's secondary road.
Amendment or addendum.
Right, right, so we can add to that or whatever. So I mean, I, I'm not saying there isn't anything, but.
But was that forty what? Four half. And is that the way it read?
Yeah, it's only the first half, so. One half annual fee per period.
Two weeks from today would be good. The ambulance decision will be on the nineteenth.
So she's charging twenty twenty-five for the roads and twenty twenty-five.
Can we add that to the discussion today? I want to talk about this more. I wonder why we're keeping her.
Well, we don't have to have that discussion today because we're not gonna pay that bill today. I just wanted you guys to see it.
I don't want to pay it, if we're not gonna keep her, I don't want to pay it.
Yeah. But we also need to discuss it. It's not in the bills to pay.
He's got a point.
And then.
Then there's, then there's definitely a reason.
They won't have a fine plan B.
I'm just gonna throw this out there, I had a long conversation with a different county this week. They are hiring an outside firm. To do their HR work. Costing fifteen hundred dollars a month. This is costing us eighty one hundred dollars for one person, plus we're dumping all that work on court. I'm just saying that I see a different avenue. Uh, with a lot more accuracy, but that, I know where you're gonna try to go here. I've watched her and I really don't think she gives us anything that special.
But the thing what I was gonna say is what you're talking about is HR and this is H R and the unions.
But they do. Negotiations and all the HR work.
Let's talk about it in two weeks. Yes, not on the agenda.
No, but that's what I'm saying, that's why I like that, I want everybody to know.
We all do our homework.
Yes.
Two weeks after the ambulance decides to.
Not two weeks after, the weekend.
So ten twenty-four.
Yes, thank you.
And it's not in here to pay. I just wanted you guys to see it.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not paying.
We are not, no.
Thank you.
No, it's. Yeah, she said that right away.
That'll give us time to do a lot of research, figure it out.
Well, she did say she sent that out, didn't realize her again, second that roads be certified.
Yeah, that's true, but I haven't gotten a new one.
Yeah.
So. Does anybody have any questions on the payables?
The concrete question, they were here for the city to do their pile and then did ours at the same time, they. We, we got that question, it was a city's pile, but they didn't want it, so we basically paid. This twenty-four thousand was across the city piles to put on our.
Correct, perfect, thank you. And we didn't crush ours at this time.
They are, they are, they crushed down in Coon before, we had paid that previously, they're in Arcadia right now, crushing that. But you like them in the city during the winter. It's better.
Well, yeah, it's a position that it makes a lot of dust. It causes a lot of heartburn. Yeah, especially right now.
I'll make a motion to pay five hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Third item, we have secondary road sap, we have some drains, utility permits and I O D O T county bridge funding agreement.
Well, starting off drains, two of them. Both in grain eighty-two. The first one is one that we actually have have repaired, we have this different John Mott, a couple of different holes. Uh, in an eight inch tile. Um, wasn't too big a deal, um, roughly eleven hundred dollars with the cost is what we had in it. By the time we replaced all. About twenty foot of pipe and in two different locations, so. Just north northeast of Hawthorne and one tenth as far as location, so.
It was eighty-two?
Yep, section five of these, yep, and grain eighty-two.
Courtney, have you had a chance to look at that fund? Is it, I don't think I have. I'm like, yeah, wait, wait a minute. So this one. What's this story?
The next, the second. That's the first.
Yeah.
The drainage one.
I don't have it.
Yeah, that, this is the one that's then, then fixed. The guy's got an error, able to get this one fit, this one's been, this one's been completed. Um, section five of these.
Got you.
Section nine has not.
The second, well, maybe I got it backwards, section nine of these has not been done yet, we just got that one in. Um, that's a lot larger tile. It's just probably maybe thirty or forty yards off the road by regard, but. Um, I don't expect it to be a huge deal, I think it's hopefully just a simple one spot that, we'll know more when we get into it, so.
Yeah, it almost looks like it's in the ditch.
I think the circle was maybe drawn wrong, it's it's out in the field by a little bit, but not by a lot, but it's it's out in the field.
So as of the end of August, drain eighty-two at nine hundred and one dollars. And what is your repair goals?
The, the first one was eleven hundred, looked like eleven hundred and forty. Um, and then the second one, we'll see, I don't know, it's been a lot of retirement, so we'll see how that goes, but.
Courtney, when we assess that. How do we do a minimum percentage?
Now, so on all of them, Zach will usually let us know if. There's work planned in the future, um, but those, and then we'll do an assessment based on the estimated cost and then. Um, if there's been work done the past year and there wasn't money to pay it, obviously we do an assessment to get roads paid back.
You try not to carry over.
You're not supposed to carry.
To.
Right.
We, there's, there's a little bit, we do, I mean, I'm very minimal amount, maybe. Depends on the drain, I guess, is what.
I guess any of them.
Probably a lot on the history.
It is, we try, try to look at the history and what it's been. But yeah, it, it, depending on the history and and what's been done recently and. We try to leave a little bit there, but very minimal amount.
So if we have nine hundred dollars in there, we'll pay that to roads and then we owe another four hundred or a thousand. Then we'll do an assessment next spring to collect that so we can pay them back.
So do you need approval to proceed with the second one then? Yes, approval of. Technical officials be here and try to get these done before we do the work, but if the weather works out, we can get it done, we try to do it when we can. So that's where I need approval on both of these.
I'll make a motion to approve both degrees.
Then a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, utility permits next, um, both of them for, for Rattman Valley, um, both of them are just, uh, for. One new house and you got existing service. It'll just, uh, crossings underneath the road for service. Uh, first one is north of Old Carrollton. Um, they are gonna, they are gonna have to extend the main line down second more little ways as well. And then, uh, across underneath second more, today. New shells.
Just a question out of curiosity, so a shells. Do you check with Kerry for building permits and is there a communication there as far as for the checks?
G- genuinely not, because they're they're kind of independent, a lot of times we'll know. Before this, like if there's a new driveway that needs to go in, we'll hear about that, but otherwise, you know, building permit, there's generally, generally not. There's been a couple of times that we've talked, but unless something has triggered that, we we don't.
Then may I have questions on the utility permits?
Utility permits, are those copied and forwarded to anybody else except just kept in your office?
A copy gets sent back to the one that applies for it, and then we, uh. We put them in our file, but we're also trying to get them into G I S, so we have them on map as well, and that's. Um, then started, but very slow going.
A lot to do there.
There's a lot, and and like this is not a huge issue, it's the, these large fiber projects and. Some of the other stuff, it's nice to have that information, and it's. Whenever I'm able to go back and get all the things that are there, but. It's, it's becoming very difficult to put new things in the right way because there's just not room, whether it's something that. That's abandoned, that you don't know is abandoned, or whether it's something that's new, the right way is getting full.
There's a lot of abandoned stuff out there.
Wish you knew, I wish we knew what what was and what wasn't, because that generally doesn't get.
Right.
Told very often.
No.
So that's, that's the first one, um, the second one is, uh, southeast of Glidden. This is just, uh, redoing a service to an existing bridge, um, would be underneath two hundred thirty street. Um. Which, which one's section four? Is where that one's at.
I'll make a motion to approve it. I'll second.
There's been a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you. Next is the agreement with the D O T, uh, this is the standard. Transportation agreement for county bridge funding, um, we do this in every. Bridge replacement fund project that we have, it's based of their agreement that says we're gonna. Spend this dollars within three years, basically from signing this agreement, um, this. You've already approved the plans for this bridge, it's in the, gonna be in the December letting, so. Um. As we get to interested contractors and good numbers, hopefully we're doing this. Over the winter or next spring, next summer at the latest. So don't see any issues with that. Other than that, it's the standard agreement that plays well. The D O T has continued to use, the one that changes a little bit as well, there is swap funding versus not, this is a swap. Funding bridge, after this one, we're gonna be back to federal aid again because of all that. The dollar is coming under the state, but the the new bill and everything, but so this will be the last swap dollars, but. It's still being utilized in some way, it's just, this one's not federal aid. How many years has it been, the five hundred thousand, that been last ten years? Um, well, that changes per project, so that for for this project, that's, that was our, that was our, that's our. That was our ballpark estimate originally, early on, um. We'll see what, how things turn out with that project, with the way material costs and labor costs are, but, uh, that's a project specific.
So you say they're gonna be. Federal aid now running for the swap?
Yep, the the D O T doesn't have enough money to swap to all the counties anymore, so they're gonna basically go back to where. They can't leave, there are certain things they're gonna swap, but the bridge, the bridge fund isn't one of them. Um, I think they're doing it for some of the cities, they're still doing some using L W swap dollars. And there's a couple of other programs as well, but the county bridge program is is not, so.
You don't think they'll go back to swap? It'll just be the last swap.
Yep. Which, it's, the money's coming from the same place, it's just unfortunately, we have. It's more hoops to jump through because it's federal aid.
It's too bad.
So it was a really good deal and it worked out, but.
Streamline the process.
It did, it did, and there was a lot of work that went into getting that to to go to swap, but. Um, it's unfortunate, but it's getting kind of kicked down the road.
It's only been like five years, six years, less than that.
Three or four years.
Too bad.
But, uh, other than that, pretty standard agreement for what the the D O T is asking. Please the motion go by the agreement number or the project number? Either one would be fine. I'll make a motion to approve. B R O S swap C O. One four, one seventy-one. S E fourteen for five hundred thousand dollars. The bridge replacement on Phoenix.
I'll second. There's been a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed.
Thank you. Couple other items, but no. Um, just update on kind of where we're at with things. Um, drain ninety, if you remember, we had a couple beeper dams that we are finally gonna get at, get those removed, um. We found that today, actually. Um. Crack filling, um, contractors moved in to do. Finish our crack filling, which is the west of Berita, they got to the. Uh, M sixty-eight done, but they had the last two miles yet to do over to the county line, and they're also working on, uh. North of Maple River up to the river block out, so. Um, they're, uh. Working on that when weather allows. Um, we are done. Done patching in Lauderdale, there, I should say there's one patch left that we may try to get to yet, otherwise for the most part, we're done patching in Lauderdale for the year. We have a do of a couple of other spots to do, um, uh, the five mile path stretch, I guess, of concrete south of Glidden going east to the. Green County line, there's a few patches there, we need to do a couple of days worth, and then we're also.
Did you hear any more about that easement for your affair though?
No, I haven't, um, I, the, everything that I could find, it, I can't find anything that's said says for sure, whether it's right away or easement. I have found in other areas, in that river, that it was an easement that was, that was, uh. We never sold any property, it was basically vacated and given back to property owners, so. My, my assumption is, is that that is a easement and not feet title right away. So with that being said, I don't think it's something that we, and the second part of it is, do we really want to give it up? Is there any potential that we ever want to have that extend out north? It's probably not real likely, but at the same point in time. I don't know, and and I guess it doesn't do any good for the situation if if we, if we're. Giving it back to the adjacent property owners for that situation, so.
You mean south? Which one are you talking?
Yes, south, south, sorry, I said north, you're right, it's south.
Okay, I just wanted to be talking on two different things.
And you never really know, I mean, look at Arcadia, they're doing a big project over there now, adding ones, but you never know. And you don't want to landlack yourself to where you can't, like.
So the bridge. Down at Manning, that's on the five year. Plan for next year. Correct? Done by the. Great Western entrance down there, is that the one that? It sure looks like that's on the five year plan.
Not by Great Western, that one's just built.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, that one, but it sure looks like. According to the way you have it there, it sure looks like that's the bridge, and I was, I was on that bridge and it's a good bridge. So which one would it be then?
I don't know, I'd have to look.
Okay.
I don't know.
The other question.
That one doesn't, that doesn't ring a bell.
Yeah. The other question that I had was, um, are you having any issues with, uh, all the fiber that's going in?
Um, not really, I mean, there's lots of different crews that are coming in, um, so getting everybody on the same page. Um, you know, it's just communication, trying to get. Uh, one of the hardest things is when, uh, they go out and mark this stuff. Um, the marks don't stay very long, with it being as dry as it is and on gravel and all the traffic. They're gone, and it's hard to get flags in the ground, so to step out in the grass is one thing, but on the road. It's hard to, for those markets to stay, so it's hard for people to know what's all there, um, so it, there's been, they've had issues with, uh. Uh, hitting some other fiber lines and other things, um, I don't know whose fault it was, I don't know if it was the locating company, if it was the contractor, or if it was. Uh, the owner of the other facility. Uh, I'm not sure what the situations are, but there are some repairs that had to be made that are temporary and how they need to be fixed, so there's. Uh, there's, I guess, hiccups along the way with, especially with these big projects, but overall, they're going well, well, very well.
Well, I came across, um, them moving on one hundred seventieth street, and, uh. They were on the, they were, they're they're plowing on the shoulder. And then through the, boring through the intersections, is that the way it was supposed to work?
Yep, we're boring all the intersections, we're boring all the culverts, um, generally doing, doing a pretty good job. Um, they had some issues with getting fiber early on, um, so I think they're still. Playing catch up a little bit on that, I think they've got a lot of it, but, uh. Uh, I don't know that they're gonna get everything done this year that they expected to, um, just to see. What kind of fall we have and when things start freezing out, but we've already had those conversations too, that, you know, it starts to get to be. Freeze up time, we're not gonna be. Piling chunks up and.
Heck, there's no moisture to freeze, so.
Well, they, they will, they will go for a long time.
Let them go.
So, we'll see how, how Mother Nature treats us, I guess, overall, it's been, that's pretty good.
Have you heard a lot of any comments on Apple? That is so. Uh, I mean, we just, we did that.
I had, I've had one phone call about it, um, and basically what I, what I told that gentleman was that, you know, it's. It's not perfect, I definitely agree, but we have worse. Um, I have mentioned something in Green County that we needed at some point to talk and see when we want to try to get that fit in the five year plan. Um, whether that's, you know, three years out, five years out, eight years out, I don't know, that's a kind of case that needs to be had, but. Um, it's.
But it hasn't been that long ago that we we did that.
We, we slurried, I think slurried the joints here. It's before I got here, so maybe it's three or four years ago when that happened.
I don't remember when we not busted all up and grounded up and relayed it.
You're talking about south of thirty, right?
Awesome.
Yeah. Um, if I had to guess, it's probably. Twelve to thirteen year old pavement, maybe fifteen, I don't, I don't know, I'd have to look, I don't know, Dean, but. It's, it's not within the last five years, because I don't think we really started.
Probably not the last five years, but I mean, it's.
I'd say.
Not that old.
No, it's not, it's ten to fifteen year old, years old, I mean, but we have a lot of pavement in the county that's ten to fifteen years old and. Um, overall, it's, it's, it's reasonable at this point, I think, it's not a. Not a, not a bad word. Not as bad a song, I guess I said, by the way.
I'll just bring, I'll give a couple of comments to you.
Ready, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have, wait. That's pretty good. We then, I can't look at that clock anymore, that clock's gotta go. Like we got five minutes. Early, like. I don't like.
He'll let it go to sleep, it becomes a great thing, so you can see it.
Got it. So we have one minute before our public hearing. For the fiscal year twenty-three. Budget in my mind, and well, we already had all the discussions. I may need to borrow some of these. Resolutions, I think myself. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I spoke too soon. Two different, three different piles.
You're much more organized than you thought.
It's nine thirty.
Always a good.
Go ahead and open this to a public. Hearing, hey, um, since the hearing for our first budget amendment for fiscal twenty-three. Um, there's not been any changes since the first time I reviewed this review, but I will go over it again. Um, stop me if you found any questions or concerns as I'm going along, I'm gonna look at the sheet here that as it broke out by. Expenditures and revenues. So if you can see at the top, we start with the general basic fund, the ambulance building rent, um, that's the Templeton. Service, the agreement was passed by the board after we did the budget, so we need to get that money in there, so we're able to pay those bills. Um. Supervisors dues and memberships, that's the additional cost for the E C P program. Um, forty-two hundred dollars is what we were short in that line to pay for that, um. Um, auditor salaries, including bike and I first, that's to adjust for longevity, that was not budgeted for. Next item down is auditor flat books, um, after speaking with G I S. Um, she, she was not at a position to be able to print our own like we have hoped. So what we're gonna do is order some, so we have some on hand, we probably have at least one person, if not more than that, every. So what we're gonna do is order some, so we have some on hand. We probably have at least one person, if not more than that, every week come up and ask for a flat book and. We haven't had them for. Significant period of time.
Fifteen bucks.
Um, yeah, they were twenty. Um, I'd have, we'll have to look. What our final bill is, whatever we pay for the plat books, you know, obviously divide that by a hundred or however many we get and just charge what it costs us. We don't make any money on them. Um, below, you'll see jail food prep. Um, after talking to the sheriff, the company that's doing the food preparation over there in the jail. Weren't invoicing us, so we didn't pay for several months back in fiscal twenty two for food service. Um, I that has been corrected. But we're gonna be short this year because we paid several from last year. That money obviously was turned over and put in reserves because it wasn't spent, so we just need to pull that out and get that in there, so we're able to stay in line with food service. Courthouse salary spike and hypers, there again, that's to account for our maintenance. Longevity that wasn't budgeted for. Um, you'll see the item low I T salaries spike and I first, that was a board approved increase for the I T director. That wasn't budgeted prior. Um, last item in the general fund is the C D B G housing program. Um, you'll see that that's a expense and a revenue. That's the down payment assistance program. That money was not budgeted for in twenty three because I did not know at the time that we'd be doing it again, so. That's to account for expenses and revenue. Overall, there's no cost to the county on that. So you'll see the overall. All from the general fund is sixty seven thousand ninety nine dollars. We call it from reserves. If you move down to the supplemental fund, you can just see auditor salary, like salaries, like a knipers, and that's the other longevity for the person in town. Just that didn't get budgeted for, so we'll be pulling four hundred and fifty seven dollars out of the supplemental reserves to take care of that. And the last fund is local auction sales tax. So the first item you'll see is the courthouse cell phone booster project. That was approved by the board for the I T department to do that project. Um, then you'll see half of the contribution. For merchants part, we talked about that a little bit before. We had agreed to pay half in twenty three, half in twenty four contingent upon them getting grants. I would recommend leaving it in there in case you guys do decide to. Still fund that project based on other donations or not at all, it will at least be there in case you decide to do it. And at the time when I did the budget amendment, I didn't know we didn't get the grant funding, so obviously it won't be spent unless you guys approve it. And the last item is the auditor voting equipment. We did get our equipment delivered on Friday. Yeah. Um, they took the old equipment to. Securely dispose of it.
Is that the old that was cleared down in the bottom? I seen it the other day when we were down there.
Yeah, so we've got some work ahead of us to. Get the new P. They've done all the testing to accept it in, make sure it works properly and now I have to get. All set up and get labels put on all the machines so we know where they go and that kind of stuff, but. Glad they're here. They're very nice. So that's. And again, that was a budgeted twenty two expense that the equipment didn't come, so it is here now. So we're be pulling a hundred and sixty four thousand five hundred and eighty nine dollars. From local option. To pay for those things. So the overall expenditures, two hundred and thirty two thousand one forty five. That's all I have. That'll be the losers.
Don't, is there anything online?
Sorry, I had to check real quick. Now I don't see anything.
I have a question. I'm gonna motion to approve budget amendment.
Resolution.
Resolution.
First of all, we.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then we will do the preparation resolution. So if you, if somebody wants to do a motion for that, Zach, Scott.
I will. Make an appropriations resolution for fiscal year twenty three for our first budget amendment.
I'll second that.
All right, there's been a motion in a second. So the resolution sort of a real call. Houseman, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Miners.
Yes.
Motion carries, I'll pass this around if y'all want to. Steph, there's one here that I need to have you sign. It's just something we keep on file. That's just where we chose to fund it. Um. It was a last year's budget for loss because we decided to do it after we'd done the budget. We could have levy for it. Yeah, we could have levy for the voting equipment out of the supplemental fund, but obviously that would have made the supplemental fund. The levy higher, people's taxes would have been higher, so uh, since we had money in. Local option. And honestly, like eleven or twelve years ago, when the first equipment, the old equipment was bought, it came out of loss too. That's why the county chose to fund that, so.
But there's times that we've gotten some special monies from state in place.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I think when I first started working here, so then like two thousand seven. They had gotten some money from the state, I believe. And that that's actually two equipments ago. Now, they say useful life's about ten years.
Fifteen years deep and it's been, I guess, the second round.
Yeah, that I think the equipment we have now um was approximately eleven years old. So um.
Served its purpose.
Yeah, I and I feel comfortable knowing that. Using the vendor's recommendation on replacing with one useful life stuff. I still don't have any issues, but.
It's a good time to have updated voting.
In this current climate.
Good, great. All right, next item on the agenda is an approved C D B G down payment assistance program claim number five, and this is for four thousand seven hundred and forty five dollars. Does anybody have any questions? Again, this program will not exist next year.
And is this maybe the last you're all had did card?
Um.
I'm like sending you this or.
Here, I don't know. Did I give you guys the sheet?
You did.
Okay, so you can kind of see what's been expended, what's been previously billed. What they're doing out in my head, but the six about one seventy. One seventy five.
So probably could have more.
Yeah, it looks like there's twenty five thousandish. Yeah.
Get it while you can.
It will be the two eleven five.
I'll make a motion that we approve claim number five for the C D B G. Down payment assistance program.
I will second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any more to second? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Steph, there's a place to sign there under the little sticky. I think I marked the right spot because I'm. Down there.
It's unfortunate that we're not entering that program again.
It is.
It is.
All right, item number seven, resolution twenty twenty two dash zero one four, destruction of general election eleven three twenty 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 records.
All right, so I want to give a little background on this because this is never. As far as I'm aware, this has never been done before. Um, we've just always shredded the ballots when the time has come, you know, the twenty two months have passed or it's just a regular special election, six months. So we've just always done it. Well, as the auditors, there's a group of us. ISAC has an auditor's group and we have a kind of an email thread and this got brought up and actually it's in the code. Um, that states the board of supervisors may authorize the county officer to destroy records. That are not required to be kept as permanent record. So numerous auditors were doing. A resolution to shred the twenty twenty. Election. Um, there's, we still get public records requests on that twenty twenty election. What we know how we did things and things like that. Most of them have been ones that we haven't been able to. Fulfill because our equipment doesn't do what they want to see. Um, but. So it's been a highly, it was a highly contested election. There was a lot of, and not just in Iowa, but all over the country. So I thought, well, if all the other auditors are having to go through a resolution, we're gonna do that too. So um, I wasn't even aware that it stated.
If, let me ask this question. You destroy the records.
They get shredded by severe shred, yes.
Okay, now. Does the process then that we went through in twenty twenty become? You can ask questions that that I'm not telling you.
Well, we still have.
Is that still in play?
We still have all the obviously election results and there's a log on our. I'm gonna call it the main laptop that I use to pull results from the machines. In the software, that information is still there.
Okay.
It's just that the actual paper ballots are no more. But the law says in twenty two months we can shred them, so that's what we're gonna do. They take up half of the room down there. There's thousands of them.
So you can just shred the ballots.
Yeah, we just shred the paper ballot. So everything else we still have.
This is a great idea. I'm 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 glad at least you got a paper tracking, tracking of this.
So that's what we're gonna do. And hopefully we'll remember to keep. Their elections, like I said, um. You know, it says in the code, the auditor is authorized to shred, you know, destroy ballots after some few months have passed, but it also says in the code in a different section. That the supervisors may. Authorize, doesn't say shall, says may, so.
We could.
I think it's important to at least do it for. Federal elections, you know, to have this resolution on file. I don't know that it's as important for nonpartisan or for special elections.
In the previous, I'll use this kind of.
We just shredded them, yeah. I just, you know, when the time was up.
After a time like period of a bayou just.
And we're not alone because there's many and many, and there's one auditor that's got way more seniority than me that nothing about. So I did not feel like I was. You know, I'd missed something. A lot of people weren't aware of this, so I think this is just. How many, many counties in Iowa are choosing to do that just because of the election.
So we're not sitting on any other. Ballots.
We have, we have primary ballots down there.
It's twenty two months, isn't it?
Well, the primary is a little different. You could shred those as soon as the general is over, I believe. Or something, there's, the primary is different. It's not twenty two months. It's has something to do with the general election and I don't remember what the. What the dates are, but you don't have to keep the primary for twenty two months. Because it's dependent upon the general election anyway. The primary doesn't have any winners per se, you know, the winners are in November, so.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution. Two thousand twenty two dash zero fourteen. Destruction of general election. November third, two thousand twenty records.
I'll second it with the, but it's just dash fourteen, it says zero fourteen.
Well, I have it.
Be both ways.
What you guys are gonna sign says dash one four.
Okay.
So let's go with that because.
I will second.
All right, there's been a motion in a second. No, you're good. It's a resolution, so it's real call.
Houseman, yes.
Rebels.
Yes.
Shetler.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Miners.
Yes.
I think most of our resolutions are three digits after the year, but since I have it printed, we're just fourteen, that's tough.
I'll sign this and then I'll start on to the normal management and. All right, Rick Perdine, section sixteen, Glidden Township. Changed crop rotation or optimum yields updated.
Russell.
Russell's twos and P indexes. Dunn and Doug Gerken Farm, section twenty one, Wheatland Township, no changes. Penner Site, section one, Lincoln Township, Otten Bay County. Changed crop rotation or optimum yields. Cornerstone Partnership, section twelve, Richland Township, no changes. P I dash two three three finisher, section twenty four, Richland Township, original plan. And we can go into penary reports.
I can go first. On the twenty seventh of September, I had R S V P foster grandparents. Last week. Gene and I attended uh. Western Iowa. Vibrant communities. In Templeton Thursday, um, I attended the. Tour of the courthouse for the general contractors and some time. This week. I have tomorrow morning is landfill annual or monthly board meeting and that is all.
I guess I can go next. Um. Let me get over to my calendar here. So two weeks ago on Tuesday, I had a policy council meeting. Uh, we went over through all the head start stuff. Uh, went through the program report. There was no health and safety. Reports, um. One of the things that we um. Talked about was the school readiness program report and also two thousand twenty one, twenty two uh. P I R, the program information report, which has a lot of information on them. Uh, we also had discussion on this on the early head start uh on base. Program, we may have to uh. Eliminate a couple of slots because uh. We're having a hard time getting those slots filled. And it's because. One of the things that's happening is a lot of these parents that goes by income guideline. And their poverty level so low on that. And as soon as people take on a second job, try to help themselves. Those they're. Put them over. And we're seeing particularly down around the wall key area of big problem with that. You know, but people are trying to help themselves and wind up. Can't even keep on the program. So we're having a hard time fill those slots. Um. I mean, their expenses are high, but their incomes also gotten higher a lot of the years been. That's one of the things that uh. Was brought up. Um. We talked about retention, consent consent of policy. Um, some training and technical assistance plans. And things like that. Then on Thursday, I had the board meeting for new opportunities to recover the basis, same stuff for the head start. We did renew our annual insurance with Mid America. Uh, basically our property went up ten thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. But the workman's comp is the best, the blessing of the whole thing. She went down fourteen thousand, so only. Uh, with everything else, our policy toll files ended up at nine hundred and thirty one dollars. Looked at uh indirect cost of seventeen percent, but we are using fifteen point seven yet this year. Um, we talked about some stocks that we have about the interest that we're getting on it. Um, they, we did approve this fiscal year twenty two budget. Uh. And that one includes a four percent of poll in it. Uh. We did community service block grant, the budget amount of a twenty five hundred and sixty eight dollars. And then we also um. Had a discussion that the new opportunities would like to be. Have able to use supply some of the counties of opioid sub funds for their recovery and support services. And we'll probably, he'll probably round talk to all the counties on there. Are we supposed to get a new sign out in front? That is, uh, fine as in, but it will probably a couple of weeks before it's erected. Um. Then we also approved the fiscal twenty three C S B G contract for two hundred and fifty three thousand four hundred and twenty five dollars. And then also authorized our. Additional signatories for that program. Then on Tuesday this week or last week. Uh, C A D C, uh, Sue Gannon was there to give a talk about her program. Where she's going into schools and doing mental health and stuff and through. Electronic means and how that's going about our business. And as. Scott said, I was attended the vibrant communities down at Templeton, which was, I felt like a very good program. A lot of different people from different areas. And then Thursday. A lot of different people from different areas, and then Thursday participated in the walkthrough at the courthouse here. Wednesday, this week, I'll call it guys private janitor form one tonight, I don't have anything else right now at this time.
What time is that?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
It starts at six thirty?
I went back to.
I can go next.
No, what's your world?
My cross your name out so stuff gets to be. I had your name written down, you're like, okay, go and I signed.
Last week I met with a couple different department heads discussing just different things within the courthouse. Then I attended the S C H courthouse walkthrough as well. This week I just have the chamber forum. When Tuesday night, Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
In it forum, and then I'm actually, if you guys would like to attend, hosting the chamber night shift Thursday. So if you belong to the chamber, which. And and I'm actually not doing it through the county, I'm doing it from another job, but so we're gonna have, and Zach, I invited Zach. It's got some of our vendors from the cleaning chemical industry, so you got Spartan, three M, Rubbermaid, all those, and equipment specialists coming in. And you kind of get together, provide food, have cool drinks, and we're also doing a customer appreciation, so. Customers are as welcome as well.
Volleyball game to go to at five forty five.
Starts at four thirty.
That's all you got. I've heard of those, sorry, but I've heard of those and I didn't.
The twenty sixth. We, I believe we, I don't know, this has been off and on so many.
We didn't have a meeting.
We didn't have that. So I've got it listed, and I'm trying to decide, I don't remember having it, but maybe we did. I had attended some mental health meeting on the twenty eighth. Attended that by Zoom. Had some other doctor's appointments that day, I just couldn't make the timing work, so I had to do some Zoom and I didn't get the whole meeting, so. I did do that on the twenty eighth, nothing exciting there. Other than Jean and I briefly talked Cherokee County doesn't want to sign the twenty eighty. Agreement, they're the only county out of the bunch, so we're still working on that, I can't get a good feel for. Why, other than that I think they want bylaws involved with it, and and when we established this. We never had bylaws and I know the twenty eighties override it. I I can't get a feel for why.
Why everything other than the in the original M O U is in the would be the bylaws?
Exactly.
Just reputation.
I think, and and I think it comes down that they have an employee from their county that they don't want to have. As be the employer of record, which goes back to the argument that I had at the very beginning when we decided to do that. But we should make regional employees instead of county employees. But I think some of the counties that the employees lived in were getting better benefits than they, I think they were afraid that we would. Rip their benefits away if we went to a regional status, which I don't think anybody had the intention of that, I think it was just. The intention was to stop this problem from happening, so anyway, so that's an ongoing thing that we will continue.
So is that the twenty eighty agreement from the beginning?
No, the twenty, the last twenty eighty agreement that we did when we brought Chair. No, no, Humboldt and Coconhony. That's where a lot of it started. So we'll see where that leads. Then we did not do, did we took a meeting last week? No, we didn't either. Kind of a lazy bunch here lately.
I think the seventeenth.
Yeah. Being lazy as much, I guess. I had a seat, a board meeting, C A D C on the fourth, and Jean covered all that topic very well. I tended, we've kind of started another little program, it's just kind of a lot of stakeholders sitting down at the table. Talking about some mental health issues and some housing issue and some. People living on the street issue, and we're kind of. Got the guy, I said, we got a lot of stakeholders put together, that meeting has just been, we've had two of them now. It's going okay, I I'm not sure where this is going to lead or, there's so many people providing. Avenues. But there are still some slipping through the cracks, and and that's the ones that we're trying to attack. New Hope has been kind of spearheading this a little bit, Adam Swears has been behind this pretty hard. We had a nice discussion with some insurance companies. There's another new insurance company coming on as for as an M C O in State Iowa. That'll be coming in, I believe, the first year, they may have some programs. I think when a lot of the times when these M C Os come on board, they start a lot of programs and then they start pulling the funding from it, so it's matter. You can sustain it, but we might take advantage of it and use it as a pilot project. We're gonna try to scope it as a rural issue, we're not going to attack. The metropolitan areas, the Fort Dodges, the Sioux Cities, we're gonna stay away, we're gonna stay in the smaller counties. To which Carroll County is probably the biggest one of the smaller counties. And we're gonna try to keep it in Carroll County for right now, use of the pilot program, get all the bugs worked out of it. And then maybe make an approach, I think they're wanting to make an approach to the governor's office about. Seeing about some full-time funding or at least a program there that's available to county, so we'll see where that goes. That's gonna be a while, yeah. That was all I've had in the past. Been kind of missing in action, I'm quite a little bit. Doing the best I can for the problems that have been going on, I've got the candidate forum on Thursday, a Wednesday. Region twelve will be on Thursday, board meeting, and then I probably will attend. The night shift that Stephanie will be having through the chamber. And that's pretty much it for me.
Dean, you have exactly fifteen seconds.
Yeah, well, that's not gonna happen.
So we'll just do that after.
Your clock suddenly works?
Yeah, yeah.
On the small screen.
Alright, it is ten AM, so we are going to go into a public hearing on proposed plans, specifications. Form of contract and estimate of cost for the courthouse H D A C replacement and improvement project. This is more of a formality, it gives the public an option and a voice if they would like to speak about the project.
Good day comments, Courtney, written oral.
No.
I I did not any formal.
None for the record?
Dalton, do you have any?
Nothing online?
Negative, me or online.
John, have you heard anything or do you want to say any comments?
Sure, I, I guess the answer is no, I have not heard anything, so. I don't really have any other comments other than I'm here and available to answer any, you know, questions that you might have.
So John, what are the next steps after we receive the bids? On the twentieth.
We'll open them probably that following Monday on the twenty fourth, I'm assuming. Okay, yeah, you can open them publicly or privately, your options, so if you open them Monday, you can. If you have, you know, read openly, you can, you can acknowledge the bids are received and, you know, get balance and things of that nature. So I'd be happy to sit in on that, next steps would be. Checking the bids, you know, in comparison with the budgets, making sure everything is on track there. And with everything going, you know, according to plan. Prices are where you need them to be, and what what we would do is complete the contract. Between the board of supervisors and the general contractor. On behalf of the county, and once that's signed, the next steps would really be. The general contractor getting ready to mobilize and start construction.
When you say you check on part of that, look at the bids, you would be checking the math on it and make sure things correct on it, is that right?
Oh, yeah, as much math as as necessary, yeah, usually you get a bottom line number, then you get your alternates as well, so. I think I would just check out with you that everything has been submitted according to the the bid documents. In terms of bid security, any sort of forms that, you know, were required for for submittal. And, yeah, you know, really, the the big picture is whether or not the bids. You know, are within the threshold of, you know, what's acceptable to the county in terms of what the budget is, and. Yeah, you know, we'll have to see what what comes in on bid day, and then we'll definitely go from there, but yeah, I'll tally the bids. And, you know, make sure all the paperwork is in and whatnot, and then, you know, correspond with you and and make sure we're ready to accept a bid.
We will have it as an agenda item. On opening the bits, it won't be done in private, I don't think.
No, we should do it.
So, yeah, if there's no more questions and there's no comments from the public, we can close the public hearing. And we need a motion about it. Alright, we're gonna close the public hearing, and then we will go into the last committee report for Dean.
Prove the plans specifications.
Oh, we do, okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve that, the plans and specifications, former contract nest in Boston.
No, we didn't do it because.
We were waiting to receive the the turn, yeah.
I'll second.
Alright, there's been a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed Russian carries, and even if we did, we're just double, we just did it. So if you wanted to finish up with.
Okay, I can go next, I'm on the September twenty seventh. I had a meeting with the, an executive meeting with the. North raccoon river management. Putting together our agenda for the. Next North Raccoon Water Management quarterly meeting on the twenty first of this month at. The education center here in Carroll County, they like to have their meetings here and they like the professionalism of the. Of our Zoom. The. The next meeting that I had was last Monday, that was with the conservation board meeting. We just had three board members there, so they did have a one, they could conduct, conduct business. The. The first order of business was the. The doc that was. Put in down at the Great Western Park, I got a picture of that somewhere, pass around. They put their, the third doc in. I think at the last meeting we reported that. Enterprises had put in a five thousand dollars, so they had enough money then to go ahead and put it in. I was down there, it looks really nice, that's a really good addition, pawn down there. The treatment of the lotus plants in Swan Lake. I don't know, have you seen, seen that lotus out there in the lake? They were able to find someone to do a drone. A drone application. Would have been kind of cool to see. It, it appears to be highly successful, I don't know if you've been out there, Scott's insane, but the plants are really turning, so, yeah. The next thing on the agenda was the Riverside Trail. Trail update. In the previous meeting, they had. Had questions about six hundred thousand dollars that was sitting down there with the with the D O T and whether or not they could use that. Those, those funds for the. Riverside Trail in Two Rapids and. Nope, they're gonna let that money just sit there until the Herndon Trail Connector.
Is that state money?
That's statement, yeah, that's been sitting there for over ten years. Campground closing dates will be October thirtieth, kind of the initial report is that there's not. There's not. It wasn't quite as good as year as last year, so. They're looking, looking at some down numbers possibly. The education center display plan, they've, they've got a company that's gonna come in and. Give and a. A quote on what they can, they can do to. Change the the looks basically of the education center out there and have live, live. Live displays, and so this, this comes from our. New naturalist out there, Kristen, she really likes that idea, they think they can get some funding for that. So that's going to proceed with this company. The last thing on the agenda was the environmental education staffing discussion. And. I'll just pass this around, this is some of the, some of the things that Kristen's been doing out there, she's been doing an excellent job of getting. People involved and. As I think I reported at last month, the intern that she had was was ill this summer, so Kristen had to do. A lot of those things herself, and then Jason had to be pulled in. So. You, he, you know, I mean, we don't want to put any. Damper on what she's doing, because she is doing a wonderful job. The only thing is, is staffing, so. They're, they're gonna be bringing, bringing to the board the possibility of hiring another individual to assist her, so. I guess we just need to be looking for that, Jason and Kristen will make that presentation when it comes. Jason made the comment that he hasn't, he hasn't had any staff increases out there in the thirty years that he's been, been out there, so. It might be something to consider, that was the. Conservation Board Meeting, then on Wednesday, there was a noon meeting with the Carroll County Board of Health. New opportunities policies. Gave her presentation on. The children's health clinic. And how the numbers are really now starting to come up, this was in, this was on August ninth. Five thirty in the afternoon. A lot of attendance, a lot of vaccinations. New opportunities is seeing a big upswing in, in, in their. Their applications for, for these types of programs, this, this particular one has been going on for quite a few years and. You know, they get under, under. Disadvantaged children and families in there and they give haircuts, they give dental, it's dental work. Vaccinations, pretty much just about anything that. That there's a gap there that needs to be filled. As far as public health. Crawford County Public Health. Administrator over there, Confiner, and could not make the meeting. But. In essence, what, what she was. What her presentation was gonna be about a. Collaboration between. Carroll County and. Public Health and. Crawford County Public Health. And. They're looking at providing gap filling child adolescent programs and family planning STD testing. At the, at this public health location as well as in Dennis. And so they're gonna be working together with, with that program. Due to staffing. New Opportunity has had these programs for years. But there was a huge change in IDPH grants. And everything regionalized. And I guess we know how that goes. Due to staffing, New Opportunities not, is not interested in subcontract, subcontracting with Crawford County. And so Carroll County Public Health is, is stepping in and gonna, is gonna share basically. This is an example of the redesign of state public health services. That is looking for more sharing, collaboration efficiencies and services. So we are positioned. Well for these services. The China. Survey is, is gonna be going out. And Trish Roberts and Barb Tui were there and. They were requesting from the Board of Health to. To help support in a. A grant application that they are making. It is the. Rural Health Network Development Grant. And it's put out by the Health Resources and Services Administration. The. Our. Board of Health Chairman Becky Vanami had made the comment that she has reviewed. Several of these grant applications, they're extremely hard, difficult to be successful with. There's never been one. Issued in the state of Iowa. This is like a fifteen year program. It's a hundred page application, so it's. Very detailed and so it's, it's a tough one. I think, I think the funding is actually open ended. Depending on the applicant and how the grant is written. So. The representatives of Saint Anthony's are very happy to hear that, you know, that they had. That somebody with Carroll County Public Health had some insight into that granting application. So I think there's gonna be a lot of, a lot going on there between, between Saint Anthony's and Public Health. On hopefully successfully writing this grant application. There was actually not a lot more than that, except updates, general updates. But. That was my week.
Is there a refrigerator alarm or something that happened?
There was, we had a, we had a. One of the refrigerators that we got from, from. Saint Anthony's, that was actually the. Public Health. And it failed. And, and so they ordered. They've actually got two new ones coming. This one probably shouldn't, we should have probably just ordered two right away because this one had expired. It should not have been in, in service. The. So. It happened over a weekend. And when they came in the morning. On Monday, they realized that the, that the refrigerator had failed. So all the vaccine in that refrigerator had to be destroyed, sent back to IDPH and destroyed. I suggested that Gene, you're, you're kind of aware of this. I don't know if you're on. The emergency number for Maple River Sewer System. Well, I have. Okay, well, you know, it's been so long since I've gotten an alert. I mean, it only happens when the. Septic system in Maple River fails because of. Capacity issues. And it only really happens when you've got like a two or three inch rain, you know, something like that. When it basically floods the system. And then I would get an alarm, I would get a text. You know, warning me about that as well as Carrie would get one, Jared Hayes would get one. And then we would perceive that what, he, he basically would perceive of what he's gonna do. I think they need to have something like that so that, you know, on a weekend. If the power goes out in the building or something like that, that, you know, then they can. They can do something about it, that it reaches a certain temperature, it triggers that alarm. So. That's.
Does it refrigerator just quit or we had a power outage?
No, and they contacted Climate Solutions and. I don't, they, he can get a part for a hundred and sixty two dollars and replace the part to put it back into operation.
So it, the refrigerator unit itself just had issues? Not, we didn't have a power outage?
No.
I don't think that's going, is that feeling on backup power? Is there a UPS? System that hooked up to that to support that?
No, there isn't. And so that's a big issue. We talked about that as well, that maybe. That refrigeration units should be located here.
Where there's backup power because, I mean. If, if not that, then maybe a UPS would support it for. But it's gotta support it for forty eight hours. Well, seventy two days, you could run into a holiday situation.
Yeah.
And there's backup power here.
Yeah.
Right.
You probably got carried at times, as long as you're notified that.
Well, yeah, you know, there's a range that that vaccine has, has to be stored in. When approach starts beginning, begins to approach that. That temperature. You know, then that.
So is there a daily log or what's the maintenance on it?
There is a logging, there's, there is a logging system on it. That it, you know, they, it hooked up to a computer so that they can see what the temperature was. In the last twenty four hours. So. They could, that when they looked at it, they could see that, you know.
But so they were compliant up until it alarmed?
Well, yes. Yeah, so, so, yeah, there was every, you know, there was just for that weekend. You know, and I think it was, and then. The, the log will continue to go if there's alarm set off. So they had.
But they were, the log was compliant before this happened too?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So I talked to Carrie, she acted like there might have been people that got something that are gonna have to be notified or something.
Well.
That was my next question. Did any of that get out of there?
No, it didn't, but. The new units have a forty eight hour log. And this one does not. And IDPH would really like to see you have a forty eight hour log so that it goes back further. And. No, there was, there was no vaccine that went out. That was damaged or anything like that. It was just that weekend where. The problem is. There just wasn't any, you know, I mean, I guess I don't, you know. Say for instance, did it go off at any other time? But according to what Climate Solutions said, no, this just happened. And that was the problem. So.
So it was noticed right away Monday morning then? So that vaccine was good up until that point?
So there's, they, ID, they, they let IDPH know that. IDPH went to CDC. And asked them what they should do. They said, well, they sent a message out to all the users. That as a precaution, if you feel uncomfortable with the situation, you may go and get re-vaccinated.
Users as like a patient that received the vaccine, if you feel uncomfortable, that wasn't.
Yeah, there's really no reason. I don't, I don't think there's any reason to believe that any of the vaccine that they. Were administered was compromised in any way.
So the vaccine before the weekend was fine. So if it would have been, somebody had to take it out before they noticed it wasn't what. Would be the only way of getting compromised, right?
Well. Say that again.
If someone would have took it out before they realized.
Oh, yeah, before. But then there was no, there was, yeah, they wouldn't have done that because, yeah. I, I think they pretty much understood that, oh, boy. This is not good vaccine and. I'm gonna ship it back.
Which is like one of those refrigerants.
I think it was like twenty two hundred dollars for each one.
Cause they're, I'm assuming they're like considered a smart fridge and.
Right. They're not very big.
Capability or somebody manually writing down it or every day that it was within tolerance. Is the way I understood it.
Yep. And it, this will be a much better, I think, I think they, you know. Looking back, you know, just, there was money, there's money in the coalition grant to, to purchase them. They wish they would have done it right away.
Did the county lose out on any, or not the county, but the public health lose out any money on the vaccines or did those?
No, they actually went, actually went to, the vaccines actually went to McFarland Clinic. Saint Anthony's Clinic and to Manning Regional Hospital. And I think probably New Opportunities, they get some as well.
And they're aware.
They're, yeah, they're all made aware of it. So. It was unfortunate, but I guess really it was a lesson that they learned. You know, so. I don't think anything. I, I truly believe that nobody, none of that vaccine was compromised that was used. Uh, that's it for, for, for mine. And this week I have the candidate forum on Wednesday and that's it.
I do think it'd be a good idea to go put that. Get an alarm on it, like you said, notify somebody.
I think it'd be a good idea. They're looking into that, that, see if they can do that. I mean, I mean, if you can do it on a subject system, I would certainly believe you should, should be able to. Well, I mean, that's, that's no different than, you know, having a, a. A smart system in your home. With your, with your sun pump. You know, you get an alarm and.
When we were doing the building tour Thursday, I spoke with Carrie, mentioned that, that maybe since. We took over on July one, that we should have been keeping a log that maybe we didn't know about was what I was trying to question.
What was the forty eight hour log? So it. Yeah, it was forty, yeah, forty eight hours. But there was no forty eight hour log system in that unit. The new units all come with forty eight hour log systems. I don't think. That IDPH does, you know, they do require that, but.
But so when we received it, was there not a log being kept at, when it was in a different location?
I don't know.
Continue, okay.
Because. You know, I, there was not much information.
During the transition.
Transition period. Unfortunately. I think if we, if we. Had known about it, I'm sure that we would have, I'm sure that, I'm sure that they would, yeah, I'm sure they would have implemented a forty eight hour. Log just by. Hand.
Yeah.
I mean, so we don't really know.
I didn't know the frequency.
Yeah, we don't really know if, if that was the case. Saint Anthony had it.
Yeah.
We don't know that.
I would like to add one thing that I thought of. I don't know if anybody reads the registry in the Sunday paper, but in the opinion part, there's a part about EMS and then. And it basically is almost per diem to what I said out in DC to East. About volunteers.
Oh.
I thought it was kind of interesting after I've been out.
Hopefully the circulation was big in Carroll County.
All right. We're not gonna make a motion to adjourn, but after this, we are gonna go into closed session, so.
Do you have anything for?
We'll talk about. That's all I have right now. But Renee's bill. So as of right now, I don't.
Yeah, you'll be good.
I don't have anything for the board now for the seventeen. And it has to be a unanimous vote to go into closed session.
But I thought it was kind of curious that I get some registry out of that.
Yeah.
Were you laughing at my drawings?
I was smiling.
From church. I asked everybody, I asked everybody, I go, well, who's that? She goes, Mom, that's you. This one?
Yeah.
It's a bird.
I wish.
Hit the crazy bone? Four o'clock. Thursday, you said? Four o'clock, three o'clock?
We are still live.
Yeah.
Enjoy to have all of us present to go into closed sessions.
I'll make that motion.
All right, there's been a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, I'm curious, we are in closed session.
I'm gonna do a vote. I'm gonna do a vote all vote.